Okay, our first item for discussion and consideration is.
All right. College. Oh, got it.
Okay. Okay, so our first item of discussion and consideration Evergreen Solutions LLC to finalize the citywide employee salary scale. Kathy, can you go ahead and take that?
Thank you.
If I could get PowerPoint, please.
This one, this one's not hiding.
No, I don't know why it won't.
Oh.
Great. Right? It's good to have, thank you. So, a little bit of history about a compensation study that the city contracted with Evergreen Solutions for back in 2021. It was a similar study as I'm proposing that we complete, but it was never completed. And in addition to review of pay, it also included a right review of benefits, which I'm not recommending at this time. I just think it's important that we move forward as we're looking at budget with developing a pay scale for our staff. So, why is a pay scale important? You know, promotes equity and fairness across all positions. It helps with our recruitment and retention. We're small staff, everyone is very important and critical to the operations here. And having a financially sound pay plan also provides them career growth. They can look and see and plan for, you know, their compensation in the future. So, the study that I'm proposing has three purposes, which I've sort of just reviewed. But the end result would be to provide a structured compensation plan that ensures competitiveness in the labor market and supports that internal equity and transparency. Key tasks would be, one, initiate the initial data collection. There's a certain amount of data that we would be providing them. They need to understand what our goals would be in a pay system. And then move towards benchmarking and survey for targets or peer cities. At the point that they develop the peer cities, I think it would be important for a presentation to the board so that everybody is on board with who we are designating as our benchmarks and who we're going to bench ourselves with for this position study. The next step then would be for them to conduct the market survey, collect all that external data, evaluate the strengths and gaps in our current pay plan, which we lack, we don't have one, so that's easy. And then propose a new pay plan based on their findings, classify our jobs and develop the implementation solutions. And then the final tasks would be to draft a final report, which would summarize their findings, the implementation cost, what would it cost to put this plan into place? And then a communication plan for staff. What, you know, what, how was this plan developed? And what does it look like for each individual in their position? And then finally, they provide compensation administration. So guidelines for us for how we maintain fairness and sustainability over the future of the plan. Timeline for the study would be 60 to 90 days from contract execution. This would be a professional services agreement. It's under 10,000 and actually doesn't require board approval for the dollar amount. However, it wasn't specifically budgeted. And it's an important study, and I thought that you all should be involved in the decision-making on moving forward with it. So, I am seeking approval to enter into a professional services agreement with Evergreen Solutions. I personally have experience with Evergreen. They did the City of St. Peters' most recent compensation study, so I was involved with them. They actually are looking for more Missouri clients. They were very pleased with the process with St. Peters' and my involvement with that. And so, they've offered what I think is a cost-effective proposal for the work that they're going to perform. I also recommend that we include the Board of Aldermen and Mayor positions in this study. That's something that's come up on the board, that we review compensation for those positions. So this would be a good third-party way to get that data and include those positions as part of the study. So I'm seeking board approval for a professional services agreement with Evergreen Solutions. We would then have this data for the budget process, and the pay plan could then be approved during the regular budget process for implementation next year. Are there any questions?
Yes, I, boy, I have a question on that. The things that are proposed all in this, isn't that data that you did research and do yourself?
I could. I wouldn't be comfortable identifying the benchmark cities, because I really think that should be a neutral third party. I'm gonna be, you know, I'm invested in it. It's hard to take personal bias out, and that's, I think, an important part of having a third-party consultant.
I understand that. I just think comparable cities with the same geographic and, you know, population and stuff like that, would it be that difficult? That it would be that we would need a third party to actually look at this? Just, just question.
And they're. I have a. I don't feel like. Have snow.
But you gotta remember, I have big expectations of you.
I have big expectations of myself.
I respect what you're saying, no, I do.
But really, my concern is, and I. Everybody. Going forward. Don't. Update the.
Now, that, that sounds good to me, yes. I mean, yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me, but yeah, I mean, we don't need to do this every year going forward, Ned.
No, and part of, part of the recall on the last slide, yeah, guidelines for maintaining fairness. So that, that will also be guidelines from them on how, how do you. I agree, we don't have a lot of. But maintaining it going forward will be easy. But there, it's, it's not, it's. Identifying.
Thank you.
No, my question was, maybe I missed it. I think you kind of talked about a little bit. How long is this good for? Was it like five years, 10 years? Or would you cap, get the data and capitalize on it every year?
So I would typically, these are like a three to five-year plan. And then you would look at updating the data. But I think what Mark's point, I'm here that it's something I'm sort of, I have a roadmap, that it would make it easier for some. Free staff to. Yeah.
Yeah, just, can you give us an idea when the last time? You sized up this.
So in 2021, the city contracted with Evergreen for a, a compensation study. They took it through draft, and they never find, the city never finalized. It wasn't a fault on Evergreen, city did not finalize.
There ever been any study done before that? Or is this the first time we've had a comprehensive, full study done? So this is the first time in the city's history, comprehensive. So I support it for that reason, I think it's very important. Like us to make sure that we maintain talent, and that's what we added.
Are you comfortable tonight? I know this was.
I would, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to prove expense.
Got a second, Ryan Wilson.
Ah, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on to item number two. Resolution opposing the elimination of the tax-exempt status for municipal bonds. That came out of the Legislative Conference. I know it was gaining support, I don't know if it's. All the other cities have done this. Recommendation also opposes?
I, I would agree with that, it has not come out of the. It has even come back for discussion as of this point. And I think the biggest reason it hasn't come back to the floor is that so many cities. I think we are moving forward with it. Motion to go forward with that.
Second.
Resolution.
I second, Ryan Wilson.
Got a second, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done, we. Up the resume. Continued discussions on chickens, residential zoning.
Five o'clock in here.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So this was a continuation from the discussion that was started at the last meeting regarding chickens and residential zoning. So, you know, John Young and I are available to answer any additional questions or seek your, your direction on what, if you would like to make changes on cities code related to chickens.
Question, are we going by the state's law of how much yard you need to have? Or are we going by our own law? I think that's my only question, to understand that.
In terms of the specific chicken regulations and the amount of square feet, we are. No, I, I. I felt you, I got you. It is based upon county regulation, which we have to adopt since they do our animal.
Already had.
Right. They're going, well, we are going by the counties plus our zoning.
What is?
Well, what's the regulation?
Yeah.
Well, right now, the regulation is that it must be in the R1A zoning district, because that's what I was in. And then outside of that is the general regulations on keeping chickens. There's not a minimum square foot requirement, excuse me, except in the case of keeping roosters where you have to. Right. Well, what we talked about were certain language that says, yeah, Dad, we talked, we talked about it, but that's why we were getting. We don't have a minimum. A standard R1A zoning district, lot sizes. But I think that's where they want it.
Oh, so there is.
Well, assuming, it has to be an R1A, you know how sometimes not all zoning non-conforming use, it could be. E, in that circumstance, it could be less, but it has to be in the R1A. Most of our subdivisions. Most of our subdivisions are in the R1Ds. They're not allowed in, only allowed in R1A.
Wow, okay, they're not. Okay, that was. On subdivision regulation, they are not. But in R1A, they're allowed with the one.
They're allowed in R1A irrespective of the size.
Right.
Now, if you are going to have, there's something in the county regulation of more than. Has to be at least 10,000 square. In terms of the 10,000 square foot area for the animals. Cannot have, right. It should not be there.
They said that the HOAs could no longer regulate chickens.
Yes, and that, and that's in relation to the HOAs, but we are not.
Okay.
As a city.
So the city can override what the state is saying.
Well, we're not overriding what the state's, state is a separate, it's a regulation on HOAs. Nothing to prohibit the city from having.
Okay, so if somebody has two tenths of an acre, they can have chickens. I'm confused as to what the city's.
Cities.
Amount acreage the city has right now.
We don't, the city's regulations do not specify based upon land. City's regulations say that a fowl is allowed in R1A zoning district. R1A zoning district, that is the only district. As a practical matter, it's the only district where that's.
So most subdivisions are not.
I believe that to be the case, I have not done an analysis, but generally speaking, if someone comes in, they're usually.
So, what do we need to change? Or? We need to change the different zonings to make sure that all subdivisions are.
If you want to allow keeping of chickens in all residential.
No, 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 that one, the opposite.
Do you want to prohibit them everywhere?
Everywhere in the city? I think somebody that's, you know, on one of these bigger lots, certainly, you know, can have, like, what's up here on Hanley? Or there's few, in other areas, there's some along, and that's perfectly fine. But I think when we've got these subdivisions where the houses are seven feet apart and barely 40 feet from the back of the house to a fence, I don't.
Well, generally speaking, generally speaking, people not find. I mean, I'd have to go through and look at all the R1A lots in the city, but the city's R1A zoning requires a minimum of one acres in general. Well, outside of a non, a fowl and non-conformly used, that's correct. Most of the more recent subdivision, when I say more recent, the last 20 years that have not been subdivided as R1A, maybe with the exception of like Lafayette Square, I think it is. That might be a one, R1A added subdivision. But in most planted subdivisions, you're not. Again, there's gonna be a couple of exceptions here and there, so I don't want to say all of them, but the ones that have been built in the last 20 or 21. But in terms of the type of subdivision, talking about seven-foot side, side setbacks and 20-foot rear setbacks, like that is very unlikely.
So, okay, so I guess we should put something out to. Because I, I know we have several residents in my subdivision that think state now is allowing them to chickens, and the HOA can't do anything about it, but we need to let them know that according to the city, they cannot. That correct.
Oh, um, there's code enforcement opportunities, which typically in a code enforcement context, it is notice and warning first. It doesn't go straight to prosecution. But if there's no response to intent on hedging, that is the next option. Now, if it's just in terms of information gathering, I can see the minister, but typically. Letter or mail or something like that, that type of information.
The resident that has one, that Jeff went and looked at, they shouldn't have one.
I, I'm not familiar with the specifics.
Okay.
Right, and so, I, I would very. Not allowing. What is a one acre? Subdivision.
That would be my subdivision.
Oh, dude.
Yeah, I have acre lots, yeah.
Lawrence Ridge as well.
Yeah, there's, there are. There are. I just want to come and collect the egg, the prize egg.
Okay, so I'd be really careful, because back, what was it, eight years ago, when we went through all of this? There are people that, one particular house that I know of that I visited, it's .95. People was trying to say that. R1A, but they were wanting to change it to one acre. I'd be careful with putting.
Well, I guess the.
Well, I would, I would be typically. Having of. Under one. To where we're at now.
Think we would need to adjust that. For this person. Are we gonna change?
I think, I think our, our ordinance. Every. But. I don't, that's my question, I want to put something out there on. The auto lease, put a notice out there, verification. They. City has, this. Can give an update to the residents.
I'm gonna just say this, I, I took on this back when I was an alderman, and I did research with a lot of cities, because there was actually a chicken coalition promoting the, the keeping of chickens on your farm. And I know, uh, Creekport, uh, Town and Country, Chesterfield, all, okay, were had lawsuits or threatened of lawsuits, and they changed their coding to logic. As a, yes. So, I'm, I'm just saying, before you go ahead and, and decide, yep, okay, we don't want chickens, and we're gonna put something out there, there's a Right to Farm Act, that's a constitutional amendment to our constitution. And now there's this chicken, oh, uh, ordinance, is it a constitution? Yes.
Well, I guess my point to that, John, is we're not changing it. We're just stating what's actually in our ordinance now.
Yeah, but I.
Just, just to let people know what our ordinance is.
All I'm saying is, before you decide to change anything.
We're not changing.
Before you decide to change, or to say something that. There's people out there that will actually put chickens on people's property just to get a. So.
I, I, I don't have a problem with us stating what's already.
Well, yeah, and that's fine, you can state that all you want, say, I've had several calls after this was passed, and I, that's exactly what they wanted in, in ordinance through the city, and I said, no, we're already protected with.
Right.
I referred them to the, to the R1A, and they were fine with it.
And, and I would say that the question has come up, we're just reiterating, what are our new states? And put it out there. I mean, I'm, because if we say we change something, then we're gonna have a lot of problems. But if we already state what our ordinance is. Out there and.
I actually think that there's a lot of confusion, I think residents probably are confused about the state on, like, the person that just put up in Ward One and the resident, that is not happy. But, so we have somebody that apparently. I please.
Yeah, I, and your point is, we thought of, just put it out to everybody. This is what our ordinance is, we haven't changed anything, you know, and going forward, and then I think it's a fair notice to everybody.
Yeah, I, I want to just add a thought in on this. You know, if we don't do that, and I, and I, I see some merit to what Alderman Johnson is saying, and here's why. If you look at the state statute, you know, it says that HOAs can restrict the, kind of the architectural designs of the chicken coops, but they can't tell you that you can't have it for whatever property, you know, uh, restrictions are. But what I think if we don't do is the city is sort of make it known and help the HOAs out. The HOAs are going to potentially be going in and trying to amend in their, their bylaws to try to regulate that when they don't really need to. So I think it's from the perspective of the HOAs, it would help them to not have to try to grapple this and then find out later, well, oh, it was already a city ordinance, but the city doesn't let us know. But I think it's more, you know, it's for the residents as well, but for the HOAs, we're probably trying to grapple with this. And if anything, I think that if the notification goes out, I think that it may, you know, maybe post something on social media. I'm not sure. Did he post on social media? Like, I think we send it to the HOAs. Just remind the HOAs that this is the city's ordinance around this and we have all the information for the HOA leadership. And I think we let them know so that way they can handle it organically within the HOA. It takes the, the burden off us to contact all fourteen thousand residents.
My bad, I'm sorry. I was asking. Okay, well, just to clarify, I was asking our lawyer, John Young, if he could, um, draft something up for, we have a HOA meeting that we're having with all the HOA presidents. Um, I wanted to say May, May sixth, and, um, we just want to make sure that we communicate that to them so they can trickle down the lines so everybody's aware. Sorry about that.
I mean, it's, it's, we can consider it, but I mean, uh, how's that word going to get out that they need a put up a chicken coop?
Every subdivision. So we reach out. I know Kim's done a great job in reaching out to other subdivisions that don't have HOA. Don't get everybody to attend. So, so, you know, I ju, I just, you know, we try to have that plus other subdivisions that don't have HOA. Awesome. But then again, if they don't, um, I, I think it's a, I understand your point, Todd, but I also think it bred another burden.
Another layer of red tape and I'm not personally in favor of that.
We don't. Right. 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 Yeah. So I, 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 I would just say, try to broadcast it best we can. That's my.
Any other comments?
Could I just ask for clarification regarding the enforcement of this? Is this something the board's asking for us to proactively enforce? Or is this something we're enforcing on a complaint basis?
I would say first off, we need to publish, publish. Give communication, get it out there. And then I would say we handle it on a complaint basis. Not that we're out there looking, no, because, because I always said with code enforcement, I don't want to be a Nazi city. I don't want to go around trying to find people and point fingers at people. I think we ought to handle it. And that, that's my opinion. I retract my statement. I don't mean Nazis. I'm, I just mean being an ignorant person to go out there and try to call the other person out. I retract saying Nazis.
So the person that's put a coop up in Ward one that we've been out there and we're, we're going to, I guess, go back and tell them? That they're prohibited because they're not an R one A?
I think we can.
I, I think the HOAs, I really think the HOAs are going to police their neighborhoods. I think that that's where it's going to start off at. And if we do follow through with the HOAs like I was talking about, let the HOAs know, communicate clearly to them via, via an email or in the meeting or both. I think that at that point, they're going to know. And if, and if somebody tries to defy the HOAs, the HOA can say that, well, the state law says I can, we'll probably find out about it. I think we're also going to have complaints as well from neighbors if, if there are issues with it. And so I just, you know, I think that it's something that would probably come up organically anyway. But at the same time, if, if our city engineer is driving around and sees a giant chicken coop and an R one A, R one D, a lot, I think that it needs to be taken note of. Uh, I think, I don't think we need to be driving or, you know, our, our, our staff needs to be driving around the city looking for this. But if it is observed and the, you know, in the normal duties of our city staff, then it should be noted. Uh, that's, that's kind of my take on it is it's not, not aggressively to, to Mark's point. I'd go out there and, and seeking it for that certain reason. But I think that if, you know, it is our obligation if we make violations of our city code to, to make note of it and enforce it. But that's, that's my thought with.
Gerald, you had something to say? That you don't want that fight at all. If, if, if somebody had chickens on, on multiple acres on a farm, let's just use, uh, ticker. Okay, yeah, yes. Okay, they have chickens, they have goats, they have, you know, and, and for you to, for us, the city to come in and say, wait a minute, you can't have those on your property. You don't want that fight. Trust me, you're not going to win it. So.
I'll work on that. I'll work on that with Kim. Okay? Okay.
Okay, moving on. Review of the, uh, agenda? Questions, comments on the regular meeting agenda? Okay. F Communication, City Attorney. The engineer, uh, I'd like to introduce Tim Clark. Oh, no.
I'll keep.
Matt Davidson. He's, he's our new hire city engineer and, uh, I mean, I can't be happier. I, I think it's one of the. He's going to be a great asset to this. Uh, you know. If he thinks so too.
I just want to know if you fix.
And.
Lauren, Lauren Ridge. He's, she's a very interesting person. Yes.
Not to take anything away from Tom because he's done a great job, absolutely fantastic job. Uh, just like the idea of having somebody constantly hours a day, seven, eight days a week, right? Anyway. Definitely grant writing. One of. Well, I, I'm just saying. Won't. And that's just a mill and overlay. That's not. So. Okay.
Welcome.
Right, city administrator. Privately owned.
I know.
But.
Where do we go with? That's.
That's a, that's a good example of if you don't keep up with just general maintenance, a hard winter, this is what you get. Right after, uh, snow and ice and plowing and whatever, this is what you get. Got to keep up with crack ceiling. I mean, it's just not in a parking lot. That's who had to hold. Okay, uh.
Thank you. Uh, well, thank you for introducing, uh, Matt. We are thrilled and excited. We've had him out already doing subdivision tours, meeting with residents and, and going out on concerns. Um, no doubt he's going to be a great addition to the city. So stolen from Wentzville. We're happy to have him. And we got lots of work. I keep, you know, when I came on board, there was the list. So now I'm passing down a list. So we got more lists we're talking about.
That list doesn't.
No. Nope. Does not. Um, so after stuffing sixteen thousand eggs, um, we had a, a volunteers with community living and St. Matthew's, um, apartments, um, we made the very, Steve Williams, thank you. We made the very difficult decision, uh, this afternoon to, uh, reschedule the Easter egg hunt. It will be next Saturday, April twenty sixth. Um, there are severe thunderstorms predicted for Saturday, and even though the tradition has been rain or shine, um, severe thunder, thunderstorm seemed a bit extreme for us to have one staff out there, but two, for anybody to want to show up and, and collect eggs with their little ones. So, um, look forward to that event on April twenty sixth. Um, and then, uh, the Clean Stream Event was also rescheduled. We think that this was really the, um, bad luck charm for the Easter egg hunt because we had rescheduled it from rain to also be in the afternoon on Saturday. And so that event is canceled and we were not, we are not rescheduling that event with this time. So.
The flooding washed it away.
I think you're right. I think you're right. Um, and then, uh, as was mentioned earlier, the HOA dinner is May sixth. Um, if the board has any topics that they think would be important to, um, have on the agenda for discussion, um, I would welcome those. We'll certainly put chickens on there. Um, Drew Weber will be making a presentation um, and staff will, will make a presentation as well. One of the key, um, you know, uh, educational points with HOAs typically is what are the, what are the enforcement, um, capabilities of the city versus their own HOA? And so we can't enforce their covenants, um, and restrictions. We can only enforce our own ordinances. So it's, it's usually a very good, um, back and forth conversation and I look forward to that event.
Can I make a special request for the meal, uh, to be, uh, including chicken wings and deviled eggs?
Uh, Kathy, I just want to make sure I add, um, the grant that I wanted to finish up for that day. I don't know if we should put something out beforehand. I mean, I'll talk to you about it later. Thank you.
Hey, Alderman. Okay, so I'm going to say, I guess this is going to be, uh, from what I understand, my last meeting, official meeting. Cause the, uh, Charlotte and Laura requested a special meeting to square in the new pair key uh, next week, which I will not be in town. So I guess once that happens, we have you ready? Hmm, I'm gone. So this is pretty much, uh, my last meeting. Thank you for allowing me to serve and it's been a challenge and learning process. Uh, hope everything just transition moves on smoothly, smoothly. Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, I want to say thank you for everything you've done. Um, I've learned a lot. Um, uh, I disagreed with you sometimes and that's okay, I think. Um, and I hope that, uh, you have a good, another retirement, um, and make sure that about us. So thank you very much.
I'm going to try to, but I don't think I would. Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, I, I want to, and I'll say thank you, uh, as well for your service. Uh, you served as an alderman for several years and now you've done for your mayor and that's respectable. Um, I think that, um, your retirement, I hope you're, find more time to hit the cabin in Lebanon and, and fight into the stream to catch those big trout out of there. So, uh, I mean, I was the ongoing mayor, if you ever eat anything, and I'll be certain to talk to you if I have any questions. But I know we've got a lunch coming up next week, kind of talk through things for details then, but publicly say, thank you for your service to our city.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the, uh, work session.
I'm moved.
He?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Here are none. The work session is adjourned.